Yes.
Next couple of months, any previews?
Yeah, no. So, so, you know, there's ways to do this right and there's ways to do this wrong.
Okay.
And, and one way to do it wrong is like my mom would say to, would say to me, she said, you know, never show your sweetheart the dress you're gonna wear on a hen.
Uh, fair enough.
Right, right, you know, right? So, um, I will say to you that I feel good about it. I feel really good about, um, can you see the joy of those photos? Right? I feel really good about the work that we've done and, and some really strong ideas are at the table. So, um, I will say that much to you. Sometimes I get anxious, I'm not anxious about this one. All right? You good?
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ciara, on your team. Thank you Alexandra.
Thank you.
Thank you Maria. Okay, we'll move on, Economic Development, Active CT Transportation Span Grant Award.
Okay, good evening everyone. Um, one thing I did wanna add just to Maria's, um, presentation is just to give a shout out to Dan Bojus and the Communications Team here at the City of Groton. We have representatives from all of our departments that work, um, really well together to put together the content for the newsletter and so without them, we wouldn't get the bi-weekly stuff. So I just really wanted to give all of the members a shout out from that team. Um, just to move forward a little bit, let's see, so today, obviously, our department, um, Planet Economic Development, we're, wanted to talk to you guys about the Welcome to the City Gateway Initiative as well as the Strategic Communications. And, um, definitely Grace does with her presence on that. And so, um, Leslie will join me for the Welcome to the City Gateway Initiative discussion. So back in 2019, um, we started this work with BL Companies. They assessed both the Bridge Street Gateway as well as the Clansby Sharp Gateway. Um, that work was done under an older regime of the City of Groton. We've since then have a new planner, we have a new Public Works Director, um, Police Chief that's standing behind, um, sitting behind me. So, there have been a few thought process, like, changes to the designs that we were first discussing with BL. So, um, this is gonna kind of expand from that discussion there. In 2020, the Plan in Economic Development Department applied for the Active Transportation Grant and was awarded it. So we were awarded, um, in-kind services in the amount of, in the value of forty-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars from street plans. So they would be, um, joining us to further the discussion of what we can do at the Bridge Street intersection. We'd be looking at, um, I-95, Bridge Street, North Street, looking at the intersection of Spicer and also at the, um, Broad Street. So, on your, your left, my right, um, is the first original concept plan that we got with, um, BL Companies. And then this one on to your right is a couple of edits that we have made from that plan and just as talking with department heads of what potentials we have at this intersection. And then I'll have Leslie come up and join me, we'll share in my space of, um, all right. Joe, are you still within your screen or just adjusting a little bit? Um, to kind of talk about, Leslie will join us to talk about some of the configurations and differences that we.
Sure, thank you. Um, one of the things I, I'm hoping that you notice right away is that, um,
Next couple of months, any previews?
Yeah, no. So, so, you know, there's ways to do this right and there's ways to do this wrong.
Okay.
And, and one way to do it wrong is like my mom would say to, would say it to me. She said, you know, never show your sweetheart the dress you're gonna wear on a hen.
Uh, fair enough.
Right, right, you know, right? So, um, I will say to you that I feel good about it. I feel really good about, um, can you see the joy of those photos? Right? I feel really good about the work that we've done and, and some really strong ideas are at the table. So, um, I will say that much to you. Sometimes I get anxious, I'm not anxious about this one. Alright. You good?
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Ciara, your team. Thank you Alexandra.
Thank you.
Thank you Maria. Okay, we'll move on, uh, economic development, active CT transportation span grant award.
Okay, good evening everyone, um, one thing I did wanna add just to Maria's, um, presentation is just to give a shout out to Dan Bojus and the communications team here at the city of Groton. We have representatives from all of our departments that work, um, really well together to put together the content for the newsletter. And so without them, we wouldn't get the bi-weekly stuff, so I just really want to give all of the members a shout out from that team. Um, just to move forward a little bit, let's see, so today, obviously, our department, um, planning economic development, we're, wanted to talk to you guys about the welcome to the city gateway initiative as well as the strategic communications. And, um, definitely Grace does with her presence on that. And so, um, Leslie will join me for the welcome to the city gateway initiative discussion. So back in twenty nineteen, um, we started this work with BL companies. They assessed both the Bridge Street Gateway as well as the Clansby Sharp Gateway. Um, that work was done under an older regime of the city of Groton. We've since then have a new planner, we have a new public works director, um, police chief that's standing behind, um, sitting behind me. So, there have been a few thought process, like, changes to the designs that we were first discussing with BL. So, um, this is gonna kind of expand from that discussion there. In twenty twenty, the plan in economic development department applied for the active transportation grant and was awarded it. So we were awarded, um, in-kind services in the amount of, in the value of forty-two thousand five hundred dollars from street plans, so they would be, um, joining us to further the discussion of what we can do at the Bridge Street intersection. We'd be looking at, um, I ninety-five, Bridge Street, North Street, looking at the intersection of Spicer and also at the, um, Broad Street. So, on your, your left, my right, um, is the first original concept plan that we got with, um, BL companies. And then this one on to your right is a couple of edits that we have made from that plan and just as talking with department heads of what potentials we have at this intersection. And then I'll have Leslie come up and join me, we'll share in my space of, um, alright. Joe, are you still within your screen or just adjusting a little bit? To kind of talk about, Leslie will join us to talk about some of the configurations and differences.
Sure, thank you. Um, one of the things I, I'm hoping that you notice right away is that, um, the image on the right has a lot less gray. It shows a lot less asphalt, which does a number of things. Um, the original image was done based upon, everything was based upon the automobile. It wasn't based upon the fact that there is a bridge, a, uh, pathway that comes along the bridge. People come and ride their bikes, they walk from New London over the bridge. Where do they land? They, they land at a, at what should be, um, our, our greatest gateway to the city. Right now, they land at a, an intersection of a highway exit, um, a couple of, um, you know, a few local streets, but it's big, it's wide, and you don't really have a sense of direction. You've not, if you haven't been there before, you don't really know where you're going, where you should go. Um, people tend to go downhill if they're walking or biking from there if just by instinct. It's also a right-hand turn, which is also the instinctive direction that most people go. It's how retail stores are set up. Um, and so, looking at how to, in both images, you'll see that there is an attempt to tighten up this corner right here. And, one of the reasons for doing that is, number one, it gives you more space to make it look beautiful and to actually celebrate that intersection. Um, but the other thing that it does is when you tighten an intersection, you make it much more walkable because you don't, it doesn't take you as long to get across the street. Um, and right now, trying to walk across the street at, just Pickbridge Street at this intersection, trying to walk across that intersection right now, the way that it is, the light doesn't last long enough. And that's for most people who are able-bodied, let's not even imagine how long it takes someone who has any kind of limitation. The light just doesn't last long enough. It's also very confusing. Um, right now, when you get off the, um, the sort of frontage road that takes you to the right, you might take that because you know that it's there, or you might take it because it seems like the right thing to do. Um, or you might get to the light and decide, oh, I need to go right. So, even though you've got two different options to go right, that's not a safe intersection. And that one bulbs back out and comes back in, it creates a funneling condition. So there are lots of reasons why, uh, the existing and, in my opinion, and the opinion of several other department heads, why this is actually not the best solution for what we're looking for. And what we're looking for is accommodating cars, but also accommodating human beings who are walking or biking, or wheeling a stroller, or walking with a cane, um, whatever. Another thing is in coming in the other direction, um, if you're coming up Bridge Street toward the, this intersection, I have to check myself every time because where the parking is for, um, pride center, thank you, um, where that parking is, feels like another lane. Those, the parking isn't well-stripped, the, I am, I would be surprised if no one has gone over the curb, um, with the little grass strip that differentiates it on a map, but doesn't really work, um, in real life. It's a, it's a quick stop and a, and a detour, which is dan, also a dangerous condition. Um, it's also that much further from the other side. So, we're looking at a bunch of things, um, including more on-street parking, which we know slows traffic down. We know makes pedestrians feel safer, we know it makes bicyclists feel safer. It's not at the expense of other parking in the area, it's additional parking so that as these businesses grow and as we get more businesses in that area, there is enough parking without having to make it be, by keeping it part of the road and having it do more than one thing. The parking does more than just the parking. It makes it a calmer, narrower sense of entry, you feel like you're coming to a place. So, we're starting to look at this in a, in a different direction. Also, um, the, the tight, and when I sketch this out, this is BL's, um, interpretation of my sketch for them. I would actually make all of these, um, even a little bit tighter. The tighter a radius you have to make when you're driving, the slower you have to go. If you are making an immediate right turn, you know you have to go slower. That's what you do instinctively, and the goal is to, to design the roadways so that people who generally drive by instinct more than by stop signs or speed limit signs, so that those directions and how people instinctively drive is safer, is slower, is more thoughtful. I just read an article today where somebody, um, was told to cut back about, it said thirty feet of overgrowth on a street. Um, I can't remem, I'll, I can find it and get it to anybody who really wants this, but they cut it back and all of a sudden, traffic was going much faster and there were starting to be accidents because, in fact, people could see. Actually not being able to see is what kept it safer. It's not the case everywhere, you have to look at these things and calibrate them for each, um, location, but that's what we're doing, and that's what we're doing not just here with this project, but that's what we're doing all the way down Thame Street. We're looking at each intersection, we're calibrating the changes that we think would be helpful for each intersection, for each area, and doing that as we look elsewhere. It's, it's a little like what, um, Maria mentioned was, you know, you, you start the base of your, um, your pyramid and you, you build from there. You get the most secure, the most stable, the most important pieces of it together, and then build from there. Um, I'll take, yeah, go ahead.
Appreciate, I appreciate your work on, on this. But the, the more I listen to it, I, I mean, it's, it's pretty clear that it's, this was based on more on, you know, feeling and perception, and you said you talked to other heads, but did we talk to the, uh, Department of Transportation on this? Because, go ahead.
I wanna back up, it's not feeling and perception.
Okay.
Um, I mean, some of it is feeling and perception, I, actually, I should say that.
Well, well, that's what you said that, though, you said it, your feeling, so.
But the, but the value of feeling and perception is what dictates how people drive, how people walk, how people bicycle.
No, well, my, I, I, this is why I ask that question, it's because of, because there's things, you know, we, we like to do things, but then there's other reasons on why there are things are. So I, I, I would say, or I'd ask, one, did we talk to the Department of Transportation? Um, because of just looking at this, I, I would, I think they would argue that there's a reason why the, the current layout, like that, that off-ramp right there that goes onto Thame Street? Um, uh, well, first of all, did, did we talk to Department of Transportation?
Yes, so we did talk to the Department of Transportation. They have gave, uh, kind of like their green light on the first initial concept plan. But with this next phase of through this active transportation grant, we want to go back to them, kinda look at these plans a little bit further and see, are there different ways that we can tighten up? Are there some other elements that we could add from this and compare it and?
Okay, yeah, so based off this, and with, and, and I, and I know this just kinda hits home to me because I live right down there on Thame Street, right? And, wh- when I saw this, like, taking out that, that little ramp thing that goes directly onto Thame Street, um, it just reminded me when I come home from work, or if I, um, or going to work, right? There's already a backup of traffic of people going to EB that lead onto the ramp. So if we take that out, right, all everybody that lives over there, and everybody that uses that, as far as like, cause there's also military people that, they, instead of going Route twelve, they go around and they bank off right to continue on, it's a very, very busy. If we don't have that, that backs up traffic all the way onto the ramp. So there's more things that you have to think about other than, um, you know, I, I, I mean, I get it, the pedestrians, I get away, but I'm not so sure, and I'm not an engineer, but I'm not so sure that if we do that, that solves, that helps out the commuters. And especially if we would like to see Thame Street dwell and thrive, we take out that, kind of that little quick little thing off the ramp to get to Thame Street. And so, so that's why I was asking, cause I, I'm looking at this and, and, and I know a lot of the DOT guys, and I, 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 I think they'd be like, I mean, I mean, it's, it'd be very difficult to argue to take away, to take off. I think we actually need more, like, like, you know, I think we need more access lanes than taking things away, if that makes any sense, you know? And, and yeah, the, the light is slow, but I, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we justify making it easier to get to Thame Street?
When, when you have a light that changes more often, you get more cycles, say, within an hour. Okay? Which moves more people through. Um, and if you're looking at it, if you're looking at this next intersection purely from the perspective of an automobile, then leave it as it is. But that's not what people have said that they want.
But who, who, who though? Because I, 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 and I'm not, I'm not gonna argue, I'm just saying I lived there, that, this would impact me and my, anybody who lives in that section, the business owners right there, that impacts everybody over there. So, and, and I'm just, like, when I go, come off that ramp, and there's car after car after car of everybody going to EB, I'm glad I can take, take that immediately, right, because, or else I'm stuck in traffic now, you know? So, I, I think, I, I, I think, or I would ask as a council member, to, to maybe, um, look back at the history and kind of even figure out why they even have that there, you know? That, that, that couldn't have been, twenty, thirty, forty years ago, that may not have been there. They could've put that there, so it made it easier to get to Thame Street.
We, we can certainly look at that, and I have no problem with that. My goal is to make it the best it can be, so, this is not a, I'm not trying to sell.
No, 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 I know that, and I'm, I'm just, I can already hear my neighbors, everybody else, ask me, come to me, and say, why did they take that out? You know?
Sure.
That's it.
Um, just to answer a little bit of why we took the light off, um, or this leak off from the exit is not only, I don't know if you can see better this picture, but there is a driveway intersection or driveway that comes right off when you get off the curb. And then there is also, this is the point where the Gold Star multi-use path is the crossing for that as well. So there was a interesting or kind of safety concern that was happening right at that location that both the property owner and businesses at that, I'm flex, I'm sorry, were, um, were saying
Yeah.
That they wanted us to, um, look at a little bit further. In regards to taking the leak off, DOT was involved in that. They do want us to further look at what would the impact be to lights that are on Bridge Street, but they were thinking that it might have a minimal impact of the backup that it will cause on ninety-five, but they do want us to further evaluate that.
There's no way, especially, a- a- and I get, cause I, like, now I'm, I'm looking at it, and, and I get what you're saying, I, I get it, I see the people trying to get over, but, um, and, and I was there, cause what I was, what is, what I was gonna say is that you could do it this way, but to make sure you have another lane for people to go right, you know? But then, then you kinda threw me off when you said you should actually narrow, and so it looks like you were taking away lanes. Like, if we added a third lane to that, and I'd like to say, I'm not an engineer, if we added, if we added a third lane, right, that you can strictly go right, right? Rather than having to keep people in that lane, the same lane that you.
That lane exists here still.
What's that?
You're coming off, and you've got two, you've got two lanes. One is an exclusive right turn, and one is a straight or a left.
Oh, but there's still two lanes? Oh, alright, well, I, it's gonna, I just don't see how that's not gonna, there's people, it's gonna, so you're saying that there's one lane for people going to EB? That's, that's.
Depends on how they're going.
Okay. I'm saying, you, I, what I'm saying, I'm not an engineer, but you could do this, but I would say that there would have to be two lanes, and then a third lane that goes right, but you still keep that passage or that green or whatever you guys, we're like.
But you're just saying, keep it, instead of there being two lanes here, have three, have one.
I would say that, yeah, if you're gonna take away that, that sole lane to go right, you'd have to add another lane, like I said, I'm.
But you don't, you do not currently have two lanes coming straight across. You have one lane.
Yes, it does, there is two lanes.
You have one lane that goes forward, one lane goes straight, and the other one goes left, right?
The right.
And then the right, the right is there, but you're still not gonna have two lanes going straight. You're never gonna have that. So, part of why we're doing this.
It's, it's alright, it's, it's alright, I'm just saying, plus, plus.
Well, do you wanna know why we're doing this or not?
I know, well, my initial question was, because I've been listening, and I listened to people talk, and I was asking if she, if they talked to the Department of Transportation, cause right now, I see that there's a problem. I see it, I'm out there, I see it. Those are state ramps, did we talk to the Connecticut Department of, of Transportation? Because there's a backup, and I'm, I'm looking at this, and I don't see that this helps the backup. It helps the pedestrians, but it doesn't help the backup. So my initial question was, did we talk to them? Because if we didn't talk to them, and we're putting all this work into this, it doesn't mean anything.
But they said they talked to the DOT.
They said that the initial phase they did, but this, they didn't bring to them yet.
That's, well, we're.
Because we're coming to you guys for the grant to go back and have another discussion.
That's, that was my question.
And just to be, just to clarify, I, I just, I don't want you to think that I just, like, sort of whipped this up because it looked pretty. I have fifteen years of planning and traffic experience behind me, so, um.
I wasn't trying to, I asked a clear, concise question, did we talk to Department of Transportation? And you answered that, and I was talking about this phase. I just wanted to know, did they okay this before he came to us, that was my question.
Great question, and thank you for asking.
Okay.
This is, this is Deputy Mayor Deepak, can I ask a question or make a comment?
Sure.
So, I think, because I'm on my computer, I might be able to see this a little better than some of the councilors there. Um, but it looks like if I'm, um, looking at it right, when you come off the highway, so when you come, come off the highway right now, it's two lanes, you can turn right into that leak area, or you can go straight, which turns into another two lanes of a left-hand lane and a straight lane. And what the proposal is, is to change it to when you come off the ramp, it turns into, at the end, three lanes, kind of similar setup, just that leak lane is brought into the main area instead, and there's a dedicated right turn lane, a straight lane, and a dedicated left lane at the end of the, at the light. Right, is that right?
Yes.
That's not, it goes down to two, it goes to two lanes.
John, if there's three lanes on this one, and then there's two lanes on this one, so there were just two. My apologies for.
I'm looking at that one, I, I wasn't looking at that one, I, that's, I like that.
So this was the original one that we did with BL company. We would like to go back with the department heads that we have now in the city of Groton, and some feedback that we got, um, from them, as well as, so, land proposal on this, in this intersection that, um, the city of Groton has, the, what is it, the authority to purchase or?
Yeah, we, there's a piece of land at the corner of North and Bridge, um, that is state land that they are proposing to give back to us after their work there. It's, um, excess property that they're looking to.
So, considering the excess property that, um, the city's looking at, as well as getting the feedback from the new directors, we would like to go back and look at this, um, intersection. So this right portion is a version of this, but with some edits from department heads, not saying that this is exactly the.
I wouldn't say anything if I saw that, cause I'd see the lane, I see everything. I'm looking at that one, and I just see the two, and I was just.
I get, no, no, you're, you're fine. Um, but this grant opportunity allows us to go back, work with a consultant and the state to. to look at these plans a little bit further, and then work with everybody in figuring out what is the best solution or road configuration for this space.
And nothing has been decided.
Nothing has been decided.
It will come back to council for your review.
Yes.
Not aggravated, I'm trying to answer the question.
I, I'm sorry, can I ask another question?
Well, Deputy Mayor Depot, and then we'll go to Council Piazza.
Um, thank you. So, um, considering what Council Carter said, uh, because I agree that if there's not a dedicated right turn lane, you're going to get those periods where there's a lot of backup, and, I mean, obviously, before we end up doing any changes, there's probably going to be more, um, approvals that have to be done. But, um, the other thing, once we have a, a more solid presentation of what we wanna do, can we extend an invitation to the businesses on that corner? Or it's, um, you know, I know it's early in the process, but give them an opportunity to give us feedback as well, because they might have some good ideas, um, of what, you know, would work for their customers, that might help us as well.
Absolutely, um, so, biggest takeaways from our latest discussion is we would definitely look to see what implications this, um, designs will have on any backup to I ninety-five. And we will also do, um, definitely do business outreach, um, to the businesses within the area to make sure we get their, um, comments back as well. Kristen, I believe you had a question.
Council Piazza, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions. My first one is, uh, since I wasn't here in two thousand nineteen, this is all stemming, it started, originated because?
This, um, originated from our plan of conservation and development, um, we just, in the plant, PLCD, it talks about doing improvements to both of our gateways, um, there's beautification purposes, pedestrian, bicycle, and so we kind of lumped all of the reasons into this, welcome to the, um, city initiative, and looked at the different gateways for what potentially can be done there.
So following with that, was there a lot, like, surveys or out in the community and asking people, the community, what their thoughts were in reference to this?
Yes, so with the Thane Street Promenade study that we did, um, with Nittany Grant Partners, we did outreach in regards to, um, specifically to the Bridge Street, um, gateway, of what improvements they would like to, um, see there.
And did you have a large response, and was that response in relation to people who actually just access Thames? Or was it more about people who walked the bridge? I mean, what was, did you statistically look at who was actually responding? You know, like, it was more, like, if, I'm sure if you had more response from people who were going to EB, they'd say, oh, no, don't get rid of that, that lane, you know? But if you have more people who are more interested in businesses, they are gonna have a difference of opinion. So statistically, did you look at who was actually responding, and what were their focus was? Where were they actually coming from? Are they working here? Do they live here? Are they, you know, are they the walkers across the bridge? I mean, do, do we have those kind of, um, facts?
So we have information from the City of Groton residents of how they interact with that space. Um, we didn't break it down into, like, versus, like, if you're EB employee versus if you're a City of Groton resident, but just a collective overall view of what, what happens at that intersection. Do you drive through, walk through, bike through it, what is your experience there? Now, I would admit, we definitely would like to do more, um, community engagement, um, to get more feedback for that. And I definitely feel like with this next wave of consultants and, and the next stem of this, um, effort, that we would definitely do that. We do have, um, sorry, yes, I will go into a little bit more details in a moment, but, am I answering your question?
Yes, so I just wanted to say, reflect off of that, and also what, uh, Council Carter was saying. So two things, it's like, I've been, lived in Groton many, many years, so back, way, way back, you didn't have a right turn lane, and, I mean, and there was no lights. And I actually was involved in an accident there, somebody actually hit me. Um, and actually, and my mom actually went off the road there. So, I think it's, I mean, a lot of things have tidied up, but one of the things I think about what Council Carter is saying, when he's talking about backing up onto the state road, as a bus driver, I take that route every day. And when he's talking about backup, I can actually see it. And with me, if I have children on that bus, and there's a backup, that's a huge concern for me. Because let me tell you, when, I mean, just even in the smaller, tighter roads, you still have people coming. So if you really don't have a way to get out of the way, it's really a, a high risk, I think.
Okay. Thank you for that feedback, we'll definitely make sure we incorporate that into, into the designs.
Yeah, because we, I mean, we do have other buses going out every day, because, you know, we are serving the magnet schools.
Council Norris.
Well, thank you for taking this on. It's quite a challenge. I, I, I commend you for going back and looking at previous design. I commend you for trying to, it, it's a monumental task to merge vehicle traffic and foot and two-wheel traffic, um, and beautification. So I, I commend you for doing that. I, I, I have to tell you also, and I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but someone that does come off ninety-five there, the, the challenge is, it already backs up, like, literally up, like, pretty much on, back onto the highway. And then, here's your challenge also, and I'm glad, um, Councilperson Piazza brought this up, is when you come off the right and you come to that stop sign, i- it's a nightmare. And there's a, those, getting input from those residents is key also. But I, I would also say, that the last thing is, there's a lot of folks that make that right that don't just work at EB, they're actually coming this way. They're, they're, they're going to Jupiter Point, they're going to Shore Road, you know? They're going to Cumberland Farms, you know? So, yeah, so, it, so I-
Floor.
I, I truly commend you for, uh, taking the time to figure this out. It is, in my opinion, one of the major gateways to the city. And making that thing work for everyone, look beautiful, and represent us, along with the branding that's going on, i- i- it's pretty much key to the future economics status of the city, so, thank you very much.
And, um, I did have a question, because we're talking about backup, but, um, if you guys can answer it now or email me, the times that you guys notice these backups happening, if you guys can share that information with me, and then all the community members, if you guys have feedback or anything that you guys would like to share in regards to this presentation, or just in discussion about the intersection, um, please feel free to email me at patricec@cityofgroton-ct.gov with, um, any of your feedback.
Yeah, I forget my name sometimes too. La- last question though, um, and I'm sorry, Mayor, is, um, do you have a vision on how long does it, like, when does conversation end? When does permitting take place? When does shovel hit dirt? I- is that just out there, or are you, are you thinking twenty twenty-five is it?
We do not have an exact date right now, we are trying to at least get to a shared vision of the space first.
Yep.
Um, with the community, and then we can make more concrete, um, dates and decisions about those.
Sure. Yeah, goo- good luck, because th- this conversation could be another ten years or so.
Hopefully not, no, 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 not doing that for ten years, but, um-
All right, thank you.
We're truly looking to come to, to restaurant design that works for everybody well, that is clearly safe, that incorporates, um, all the things we can incorporate, if, if, I mean, another thing we haven't mentioned is the possibility of, um, there's space down there that if we ta- if we end up with the state land, that there's also an MS four component, putting a rain garden in down there. There's, you know, one of the ways to move this forward is to see what we can fit in, what works, and then what doesn't work. And if it doesn't work, we're not doing it, if it doesn't, you know, then it doesn't make sense.
So we'll bring, we'll bring additional information back to you in the future. But what you're here for now, what, what, uh, Sierra's here to is to get you to accept the grant award. So I-
So you can continue this conversation.
Are you ready for me to go, or you have more? Because we're, I wanna move this meeting on. Are you ready? Okay, in that case, I will take a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of eleven one twenty-one.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Abstention, motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go to seven ninety-nine, which is the Youth Advisory Board, Mary?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here tonight, um, I have reviewed, I know the mayor, you guy, uh, and the council, you guys have sat and put some goals together, and a lot of them, as I've reviewed them, had a lot to do with the youth in the community, um, of which my department kind of has a handle on, or touches. Um, so, uh, back in twenty thirteen April, there was a Youth Advisory Board that was established through the Mayor and Council. Um, it kind of petered out in twenty sixteen. Um, there was a charge for the, for the Advisory Board, um, ba- based on resolution. Um, it was a thirteen-member committee. Um, I'd like to see it brought back, but at a s- a level of seven members, um, within the community, um, to, uh, see what we can do about tackling some of the goals that were set for, or looking at, so that we can, um, maybe advi- um, address some of the, some of the goals that the council has for the youth of our community. So I come today, today to see if we can first revise the initial resolution, I guess, from twenty thirteen, because it was a thirteen-person committee, um, and then, and reestablish it.
Okay, so, would like to take, make a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council Meeting of eleven one twenty-one. Oh, can I get a motion in a second, and then we'll open it up for discussion? Motion in a second, uh, discussion, further discussion, Councilor Carter?
Sorry, miss, missed it, missed it. Um, and I don't even know if you said it, I, I know prior to, um, COVID, like, prior to all the stuff, like, we had talks within all of this, and there were different things that we wanted to bring it forward, right? And I think we tightened the numbers of the committee, correct?
Two, yes.
But then we were also talking about, um, working with the middle school, and just getting designated, um, participants each year, and linking up with the, uh, the teachers, and having it more, you know? And then, I, I, with COVID and everything, it kind of wiped it out.
And that's what Mary said.
Yeah, so, I just want, yeah, all right.
Yes, sorry.
And we'll bring this, we're basically gonna reconstitute the Youth Advisory Board. Mary will come to us, she had a number around seven, right? Is that what you said?
Yes, I'd like to see it, seven. Our biggest, why it failed, well, it didn't fail, but why it slowly disappeared is we had a committee of thirteen, so you have to have seven at least at a meeting, and we were getting to where we had four people showing up, and, you know, and it was, so we couldn't get anything done. We did accomplish quite a bit, we had, you know, the babysitting class for the youth came out of that. The Friday night outs that we used to have here at the auditorium for the middle school kids came out of that. Um, uh, the, uh, Groton Public School Services did a cooking program, came out of that advisory based on, um, some of the, uh, surveys that we did. Uh, the al- the other side of the goal of the committee was at one point to look to see what's already existing within the community, and help them advertise, and/or help them facilitate what their objective is of their, of their group, so that it's not falling totally on the shoulders of the Parks and Recreation Department. Like, working with the Bill Memorial Library and doing stuff with them, and, and, or, or STEPS, or other a- agencies that we don't know, may ha- be doing things for that age group.
This is also consistent with, one, with the council plans, the council, uh, goals, but also with where we're trying to move the city with a community service officer, and also, uh, with the tutoring in our areas here for kids that need tutoring. So it's all about going back into the community, helping the kids out, and finding programming for them, and those kind of things. Councilor Sheffield?
Um, yeah, Mary, does, now, how would this, uh, integrate with the town, since the middle school is now in the town, and there's not a city middle school, if we're dealing with middle school kids, uh, not exclusively, because we also have high school kids here in the city? But, uh, does the town have a Youth Advisory Board, or would it be just with us, uh, with the city?
I, I don't know at the moment if the town has one, I can investigate that. Um, I know they do a lot through, uh, Groton Human Services, so, and we had interacted with them in the, when we previously existed. Um, I don't know if not having a middle school here anymore impacts it, because when we did our Friday night outs, it was Cutler Middle School was invited to that. You know, it wasn't just limited to West Side middle school kids, we actually had West Side kids, we had Sacred Heart chil- uh, youth in, we had Cutler youth at the program that we had here. So we did expand, you know, we extended that stuff, even our babysitting class, we extend that out to everybody in the community.
So we can get in touch with the other schools.
Okay.
Uh, and that's one of the things we wanna try to do, is, is get teachers and other people that work with kids, and that way you have the experts on the board, and then you get the kids. My focus is city kids, if we can, obviously, right? So, if the town has a program, that's great, but I wanna focus on the city kids. And we've talked about that here amongst ourselves, about trying to get our, uh, get the programming up for the kids, get the kids more involved, get them involved in school, get them involved in activities. One of the things that Councilor Carter talked about was if you can do the whole thing, that way you got the education and the athletics all together. And then, Councilor McCain?
So, um, this Youth Advisory Committee, is it going to include any youth members?
It hasn't in the past, um, but that doesn't say it does, has to stay that way. Um, would it be, it would, it would be nice to get the input from the chi- from the youth.
Right. Just, just at some level of representation, um, would be nice.
Sure.
And, and it really sort of instills that, uh, you know, maybe they, they would, when they get older, they'd wanna be on City Council. So, it's just a stepping stone, something bigger.
Sure. Council Norris.
Um, so I'm try, I'm remembering past conversations about, for example, the Beach and Parks Advisory Board.
Committee.
Committee. And some of the conversations I would hear, like, right around this table, is, well, they're advisory. So, I'm saying to myself, are we gonna fall into those types of conversations with this Youth Advisory Committee, when they start to put things on the table? So I wonder, do we start with this, and then down the road, you know, pursuant to, I think it's Section seven one forty-eight in the state, where they establish a youth commission, where it has a little more teeth? I don't know what that means to happen here in the city, that the town does have a youth service bureau, but at least it gives more, um, teeth in its makeup, its bylaws. Um, it has to have certain sectors of the business, there's gotta be a marketing person, a finance person, you know, someone from Board of Education, PD, Recreation, and it just has more teeth. But I think this is a great place to start. Um, and the last thing I will admit, no one knows what kids wanna know, including themselves, so you can't not have them around the table.
I got it. To address your issue, I'm not ready to start a commission.
Yep.
Don't wanna do that yet. We need to get this, we need to get it reconstituted, get it started. You, the council, is the legislative body. So before we go off and, and create this conglomeration, for lack of a better term, my term, not yours, that would not be reportable to anybody, basically, they would be in charge, I have an issue with that, and that not, them not being accountable to us, or reportable to us. Uh, so, you know, all that, if we decide to go in that direction, we need to look at that and evaluate it, find out, one, can we do it, are we equipped to do it? But I think this is a good start. This has worked in the past. Uh, you're right, it is a much lower level, but, um, and sometimes we have challenges because we are the city, and we're not as large as some other organizations. For example, we don't have a social services sector here. We rely on, uh, social services out of the town, so. But it's a good, it is a good start, and your suggestion is, is well received. Councilor Norris.
So tha- that brings up two points then, is if we can remember commissions, we know what commissions are, I, I mean, commissions- I mean, commissions don't hold the total authority for making things happen, they make recommendations to us, all that kind of wonderful stuff. But then again, is there an opportunity here to spark a relationship with the town YSB? Because they probably have city kids that they're serving, and could that be a stepping stone for us to capture some of those kids? So, I thank Mary, I thank the mayor, I think Jill did mention this to me the other day, so I think it's a great step. I thank everyone.
Are you Deputy Mayor Depot?
I just wanted to comment, so, on a couple of things. I think that, I would like to see if we could get people on this board that do cross those lines, so if we could get a teacher from the middle school, maybe, or any staff from the middle school, it doesn't have to be teacher, maybe one from the high school, maybe if we were able to get the right mix of people. I think part of what this board could do is help, because the Parks and Rec director's in charge of a lot of stuff, and what we're trying to do is make sure that we're covering stuff for our youth, and maybe increasing services for our youth, and to have that all under her umbrella is gonna add work to her, and I think it would be helpful, probably, if there's someone on that board who could tell Mary, hey, this thing we're doing at the middle school, we could connect it, and, you know, make those connections if we have the right people on the board. So, that's kind of what I kind of envisioned for it to be, is almost like a helpmate for Mary to make those connections for our youth, because that is kind of, she does that in the summer with all the Parks and Rec programs. She does a lot of stuff with the kids, and I think that having those connections through the whole year will be a more seamless service to our youth, and will get more of them involved, because we're doing it that way. So, I think, I don't know if we need that in the requirements, if we need to pick out the particular people, or who is going to be reaching out to get these board members, but I do think that we need to look at having, you know, a student or two on there, parents and teachers, like, definitely have a variety of people on that board would be really helpful to make it a success. Because the last thing we want to do is start this board, and then have it be, you know, a bunch of people who are all, have similar points of view, and we've kind of pigeonholed into doing certain things. If we can get it to be a good mix, that will have a good impact, then I think that we maybe won't have that issue where it's fizzling out the way it did before.
That's a good idea. Also, this is an opportunity for us to work with the superintendent's office, and the Board of Ed, and the education system. The city hasn't done that in a while, right? So, it'll be a good, and we are going in that direction through a tutorial program, and we're gonna be setting up as well, so this fits nicely with that. So, go ahead, Councilor Carter.
And just to piggyback on what you said, and Mary as well, she, Mary does a great job, and I think what Councilor Norris may have been alluding to, is that I think if we look at the youth and advisory and all that, you know, I think naturally, we tie that to Parks and Rec, when it's much more than that, you know? It's policing, you know, or economic development, et cetera, et cetera. So, it can get washed up if we kind of put it in the bowl of, like, Parks and Rec, when it should encompass everything that, I mean, they're citizens, they're just younger citizens, but they should have, we should have a relationship with the police, which they already have a program with, you know? Fire, structural business, et cetera. And I think if it's, you know, I think that's why there also is a youth services department or borough, and not just Parks and Rec. There's a reason why they're separated, because we can encompass so many more things, just than Parks and Rec. I think we kind of think, okay, that's going to Parks and Rec, because it's, you know, the youth, but it should have everything involved, you know? So, the big picture, I think, you know, this is a good start, but I think we do need to possibly have it be its own entity, you know?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I do have a motion in a second, right? We have that?
Oh, yes, you did.
Okay. Councilor Norris.
I have to apologize, because I heard you say something before. So, in the motion, and it may be too late, I don't know protocol here, it says establish a youth advisory. Is it reestablish?
We're gonna come in with a new motion.
Okay, alright.
This was background information, the three out of, from 2013. We're gonna come in with a new motion. And, yeah, it's probably gonna say reestablish, or something, but you're right, it has been previously established. Councilor Sheffield.
Mary, how often did you want the, I'm not sure how often they met prior?
We used to meet monthly.
Monthly, oh, okay.
But initially, when we started, we met monthly, because it was, we were kind of establishing what the board was gonna do, and, you know, what direction we were going to go. And then, once we got the survey done, we concentrated on middle school age at that, was kind of where we started, because that was kind of the group that everybody felt got left out. They were kind of over, getting too old for some of our programs, but they weren't quite old enough to go to work yet, or to do anything like this. So, that was the age group that we focused on, and did a survey, came up with questions. And once we got things going, we kind of stopped meeting, we kind of went to every other month, or when, and then it got to when we couldn't get a quorum, so we kind of met whenever it, we actually had seven people show up of the thirteen, so.
So, the goal is, once a month?
The goal initially was, yeah, once a month.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Piazza.
I just want to say that I'm excited about this. I really like to feed into the youth in the community, and tie both city and town together, but definitely dip into our own community of city. I just wanted to say that, just an experience that my daughters had, but when the school was doing even just the dress code, and even like designing something in the school, they brought students who were interested, and there were so many that sat within that committee or board, and had the input in it, what they really wanted, and, you know, just even like the dress code, what does a hoodie stand for, whatever? And to hear her talk about, you know, what does that actually mean, and what does it mean to a student, let alone to an adult, you know? So, I think it's a good idea to, really, if we could push to get some students involved in here, it'd be wonderful.
Okay, anything else? Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Alright, we're gonna go to five corrections. Seven fifty-eight, police chief. First one on the list is Homeland Security.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. What we're looking to do here is, obviously, one of the main responsibilities of municipalities is to keep our citizens and visitors safe. Part of that is to include natural disasters and possible prevention or safety during nuclear incidences. So, we do a lot of exercises, we do a lot of planning, we do a lot of things to make sure that if something happens, our residents are safe, and we know what to do to make them safe. This all comes at a cost, and in order to help alleviate some of those costs, we go through the grant system, through Homeland Security. In order to get these grants, which help pay for the chairs in the EOC, laptops, internal security cameras, and such that is needed, dispatch upgrades, we need to allow the mayor to be involved in applying for these grants, and we have to accept the ability, responsibility to get the grants, and get the paperwork that is needed to get the money for these grants. So, what we're looking to do is, again, reapply, reestablish the authority of the mayor and the city of Grotton to interact with Homeland Security and obtain these grants.
Questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield.
Are these grants annual, is it for the fiscal year?
Yes, sir. From what I understand, we have to apply for these every year.
Every year, okay.
And we get, we have been able to get financial funds from them every year. They call it short-term nuclear money. So, part of being in the nuclear boom area is, they help us, these grants help us finance everything.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eleven one twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries. Okay, bulletproof vests?
Okay, the second grant that we would like to go through or accept is Department of Justice Partnership Grant, which involves keeping our officers safe, and we look to get bulletproof vests every year. The bulletproof vest lasts five years before they need to be replaced, and that's because of deterioration, breakdown of the material, through the body perspiration and sweat and everything. So, a vest normally costs about $1,015 apiece, so we have eight officers, yearly we trade them out. The way it's broken down right now is, we've got officers every year need new vests, so we put in a grant for eight of them, and we have been approved for $4,060, which is a 50/50 grant, what this is, I'm sorry. They give us half of the total cost. We already have the other half budgeted in our budget, and they would replace, they would give us the other half. So, we're getting eight vests for half the cost, pretty much, in order to keep us, our individuals safe. So, we're looking to accept, or you're applicable to accept the grant.
Questions or comments? Councilor McCain.
I just have a question. What do you do with the vests when the life of them is no longer useful? Is there some method of, it's like, do you just throw them away, or?
No, we send them back to a company, and they refurbish what they can.
Okay, yeah.
They do not get thrown away.
Okay. I was just curious.
We have used them as an example at the range. We still utilize them to see if they would work, you know, six years later, seven years later. We do keep a few of them.
Make doggy vests for canine unit?
I'm not sure what they do with them when we send them back, but I know we've had sent some overseas before, in the past.
Okay. Yep, something's better than nothing in some areas.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? May I take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eleven one twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Alright, Mark, you're up. So, we're gonna do Grotton Utilities, six, correction, seven forty-two, Siemens circuit breakers is the first one.
So, you're all aware that we have a big transmission job going on, that actually started this past week. They're actually starting to clear the right-of-way. This is our $16 million transmission upgrade, is part of the southeast Connecticut Transmission Corridor project. And so, the first thing we're talking about here is Siemens equipment for $172,844 and no cents, and that is to purchase circuit breakers as part of the ECT project, Transmission Upgrade Project, and these are requirements, and just to remind you, we make a rate of return on these, because this is a transmission pass-through. Questions?
Questions on the circuit breakers? Hearing none. Take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eleven one twenty-one?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries. Okay, Graybar?
Okay, so the second item is all the pieces and parts that need to go into the construction of the transmission line, the 1410, 1280, and 400 at Huntington Substation, and this is equipment that we also get through Graybar, and is also part of the overall transmission project, included in that $16 million project.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield.
I see there's difference in contingency between the two. Once, the first one is 10%, this one's 25%. Is there a?
That's a great question. That came up in the Utility Commission as well. The problem we're having is timing. What we're seeing is price increases in, you know, a matter of days, so we're trying to make sure we put enough contingency fund, that we don't have to keep coming back to the council or commission. But, pretty common that it's somewhere between 10 and 20% in all of this, all of these big projects.
We're having some real challenges with supply chain. I mean, it's actually global, but specifically for here, we're having some challenges, that's why they went with the 25%. Any other questions on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eleven one twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, motion carries. H O Penn for the generator.
Okay, so, the week before last, the emergency backup generator for the Meninville Building, the IT service, Atlantic broadband, the police department had Radiator Week, and we decided as the electric company that we needed to provide backup electric service, so that we, within three seconds, would have power back to the building, and would not dump the police department, the IT system, Atlantic broadband, and, of course, everybody in this building, and in this facility, all the communications and computer equipment. So, we did that based on an emergency. We got approval from the mayor, and, you know, a couple of the other department heads, like Bill Robards, we talked it through, and we had the emergency generators, if you go out the back door by the satellites where the police normally park the officer, or the, yeah, the cityans, the non-marked police cars, you see a backup generator there. We had that wired up and ready to go in under 24 hours, and it'll take about three weeks for the repairs to be done, and all told, right now, it looks like about a $35,000 job, so.
I just got a report today that they should come in tomorrow to start removing the...
Radiator core.
The radiator coil, cores, in order to do this. So, typically, what we would do, if we knew in advance, we'd come to you and get permission. It failed. I made the decision to do this, and we went to the Utility Commission, now we're coming to you, and just basically closing the loop, is what we're doing. Any questions or comments? Councilor Sheffield.
There doesn't need to be a bid process or anything with the, due to the emergency, it's not required, or?
Right, go, Ron.
And this is the vendor that we normally use for our maintenance, we have the maintenance contract with and everything, so.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eleven one twenty-one?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Abstention, motion carries. Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna move to five fifty, which is capital improvements, capital improvement projects and bonds. You have in front of you this handout, and I'll turn it over to Finance Director Yous.
So, does everybody have the handout in front of them? So, we had a request to look at the capital improvement plan that was dated 2018 to 2023, and just kind of give an update as to where we are. How did we do with that plan? Have we met our target? Have we got these projects accomplished? If we haven't got them accomplished, is there a reason why? And kind of, what is the reason for it? So, the way that, kind of, kick this around, and you can see, this is a finance presentation, it's not all glamour, it's just pretty much the information on a page, without pictures and all the other stuff. So, the way, it's kind of going back and forth on the best way to lay this out, to kind of go with the request, and to follow through. So, it pretty much follows the table of contents from the capital improvement plan, starting off with the general government, and each of the projects that were listed for that. First one being Mother Bailey House, that is currently with the Real Estate Committee for disposition recommendations that'll become due, so there is no work being done on that property, and there's, and that's the reason why. So, then we kind of went through, except, all of those, and... and what was in the plan and when it was accomplished. So the next one was the municipal building improvements. And inside that, when you went to the detail, it was made up of a bunch of different items, which is the exterior doors, the HVAC units, the bathroom renovations, brick repointing, and the retaining wall and landing repair out front. So we just put the dates when all of those were completed, just so you can see through. The, the one that I was unaware of, because it was going back and forth, was some brick repointing on the municipal building. So I, well, I couldn't remember if we did do a small portion of it or if that ended up going away. So that's why that just hasn't been known there.
And I can get Bill Robards to go back around and take a look, see if there's anything that we needed to repoint, so.
So I mean, I won't go through each slide, because the, the slide deck's a twenty-slide deck, going through all those different scenarios. And then the next one, like I said, it goes to the, the general government, the municipal building renovations. This, I just kept it as a very global. At that point in time, I don't think we knew what the renovations were really gonna be. It was kind of just a generic, we, we knew we needed to do some. But I wanted to show you all of the offices that we have done in the last few years as far as asbestos abatement, um, redoing carpets, furniture, and so forth with it. And some of these are on the Groton Utility side, that's what. They have the GU next to it, just so you can see there, because it wouldn't really be part of the city SIP. Next, again, the general government, the remaining ones there. The wastewater project SIP. At that point in time, the wastewater, um, treatment plant was part of the general fund still. So it was included in the city SIP. So what we did here was, we just, we're gonna skip this slide and then let, at a future date, have the utilities come in with the electric, the water, and the sewer division and go over their capital project plan. So we figured instead of diving into it here, we'll have a separate for that. So that there's no, no information there. I just listed out what was in the SIP, just out, so it's there. Again, then we go on. Do you, do you guys want me to go through all of them, or just kind of?
I think you do.
Okay, I just don't want, don't want to get into too much detail. I know we're kind of on a time, timeline, so I just, just trying to come through here. Again, the highway projects, you can see most of these were done. There were two, um, the catch basin cleaner sweeper and the bottom truck and plow. Those are both in this year's budget and both currently being worked on. The truck, I believe, has already come through council approval. The sweeper, they are working on getting pricing on and kind of figuring out which direction they're gonna go with the sweeper. The next page has a couple of things. Um, the first one, which was done with the exception of the traffic line painter, and that's just on hold based on, um, trying to figure out which way they're gonna go with line striping, whether it's gonna remain in-house or be outsourced. So they weren't really sure, so there wasn't a point to purchase one if we weren't sure on the direction with the changes. And then the asphalt curbing machine was pushed back to twenty-seven, and then the final truck was, is scheduled for fiscal twenty-four based on the current SIP. We go to the, the roads and the streets. Um, the, pretty much all of these are on schedule, with the exception of South Prospect. That got pushed back to fiscal year twenty-four in the current SIP. Um, the other ones have been done. You'll see that there was two aquatic roads in this, in the SIP. One of them was for a mill and overlay. The other one was for the full-depth reclamation, which was contingent on the lots at money. We did receive the lots of money, and that is currently in progress. It's been bid, it's already come to the council for approval, and that's scheduled to start in the spring, which will be completed in fiscal year twenty-three. And then the other, on the next page for the highway, roads, and streets, you'll see the bottom one, which is the Shore Ave Sea Wall Drainage, Jupiter Point Drainage, and Slocum Terrace Retaining Wall. For Shore Ave, we've done the engineering and permitting for that. That's, that's ninety-nine percent complete. There's a couple of things that are still out there. But the biggest thing with these three projects, so the first, Shore Ave, we have not done any, there's no funding for the bid admin or construction at this point. And that's gonna be a fairly large job that.
It's currently estimated around two-point-five mil. Uh, I'm going to be taking, uh, Bill Robards and Ray Valentini to talk to John Byrd about it, uh, to see if we want to bring it to the council. The reason being is, this one's gonna have to be bonded. And, uh, I know based on the twenty-twenty school year, you know, twenty-twenty project, that bond, that's put them very tight, close to their, uh, their limits. So I don't know if, if they have the, uh, they, the town council has a wherewithal for this. And, but I'll go talk to John. I'm gonna wait another week. Senate seat elections are a week from tomorrow, and then we'll see what the council's gonna be. And then, uh, but I am gonna talk to John about, about this, because we do have permission. That's not true. Well, we have permission, we talk to DEP, we have their authorization. We're in a, we're in the five-year window. I think we're in year two, I think, two or three. I don't remember now. But, uh, so that's where we are.
And then the other two projects there, like I said, the Jupiter Point Drainage, there's no current funding. They, they are, um, working with the state. The state will dredge the culvert, but I think, I believe we're responsible for disposing, and that's kind of a question. So they're working on that piece of it, but it's not the whole, that project. Um, same with Slocum Terrace Retaining Wall. There's no current funding for that, but they have been patching and making repairs as needed. We'll go to the, the parks and rec. Um, the first one was the cost of property improvements, which is now Thames U Park. Just kind of gave you a little bit of history, because again, this one had a bunch of different bullets behind it. It was just labeled as one, and just some of the things that have been accomplished to that. The biggest thing to keep in mind, um, the dock has been approved with a ship grant with a city match. So that's in the works, um, that, with an RFP that will be going out in the near future. And then the same with the, the lower property. We did receive a ship grant to do some engineering for the redesign in order to gain access to the dock once it's built. So those two are in progress. All the other ones have been completed. The fence was completed. Um, the driveway paving, the bid should be going out in fiscal twenty-two. And it's just a timing issue with that. We're actually working, you'll see there's one on the fire department, and they're gonna be going out together for the fire, firehouse paving of Company One. The park house roof was complete, storage complete. Um, the pavilion, preparing construction, there's money set aside due to that. Nothing has been done currently with that, but there has been funds set aside. The porch was completed at the Tyler House. The Washington Park bleachers, um, has not been completed there. I know there's some, um, challenges with those that Mary's working through with, based on capacity and what the requirements are with that. So that, there, there was some funds set aside, but again, it's being reviewed as to what the best option there. Washington Park lights have, have just been completed just recently. And that was funded by the Groton Utilities. The Birch Plain Trail, Perch Plain Creek Trail Extension, that has been extended through the Branford Manor property, which was part of the agreement with Related. When they purchased the property, one of our, um, the, the parts of the agreement was for them to complete that trail. So now it stops at Groton Estates, and we're currently in discussion with the next phase to get through the, the Groton Estates section.
And that was brought to council early on and was rejected. Groton Estates is now getting their plans together so that we can present with, present to you plans on how we can still do the, how they, uh, can do the community center and still keep open space for the kids. So once we're finally ready to do that, I'll bring it to you. But not, not until we're a hundred percent ready.
And then the next place, page is the Police SIP, which theirs is more of a reserve fund when they set this up with, for the bulletproof vests and the vehicles. So what Juliette did was put a list together of how many of each they purchased from the years from eighteen to twenty-one, and which the, the vehicles were that were purchased. The Fire SIP, which is very similar for the vehicle replacement fund. What they did was they scheduled out the replacement of all their vehicles, and when they needed to be replaced and backed into the number as to what needed to be funded in a perfect world in order to buy those vehicles outright, um, with cash when they came due, that number, I believe, is around three hundred thousand a year, which we, we couldn't do with a, with a budget. So therefore, I've listed out how much we did put aside for, um, vehicle reserves over the last few years from eighteen through twenty-two in the budget. So we, we have been trying to put money away. It's just not quite matching with the SIP had. So then the, the next section, so the, those first slides there covered every, every item that was in the SIP in that year. So what we, the mayor had asked me to do is also is to add slides of additional things that, of capital that we've accomplished, kind of in those periods. It's, it may not be an all-inclusive. We're trying to go through and figure everything out. So again, we just did it in the same format with the, the general government starting off. We had the municipal LED lighting upgrade. Um, the building department purchased another vehicle. They had, and that SIP was just the assistant builder's vehicle. They also, um, we also purchased the building official's vehicle. The municipal building windows, front doors, and front landing will all be going out for an RFP for, to replace. We have some grant money that we received and the, um, redistribution of the bond funds. So those are projects that are, will be coming in the future. The next one are highway projects. The highway did, had an HVAC upgrade to the, out in their break room in eighteen. One of the things that was in the SIP was the paving of Benham Road from Mitchell to Rainville. It was only had the piece from Eastern Point to Rainville. So that's in here, the Thames Street retaining wall. And there was also a change in the SIP along the way that included purchasing of five fifty mason dump. That was a purchase in twenty-one. Parks and, Parks and Rec, um, at Eastern Point Beach, they did a bunch of sidewalk and railing repairs. The Tyler House window replacement, which is one completed in nineteen. Phase two is currently being worked on and will be completed in twenty-two. The bathroom renovations to Tyler House. Um, and then the two poured and placed surfaces, the one at the Eastern Point and the two here at Washington Park. And I was informed today that the one at Washington Park is completed. So, continuing with Parks and Rec, there's a, a new vehicle replacement is in their budget, which they have been funding a reserve for, for replacement in twenty-four. Um, the, the press boxes, which originally was all three fields. I believe we're just looking at field one and field three at this point. We did do an RFP, uh, a year, if not more than a year ago, when the prices came in exceeding what was set aside. So we're looking to do the two of those, and Mary had budgeted additional funds for the, that project. So we're hoping to get that RFP out. Scoreboards are ordered and waiting for installation, and the field three fencing had a budget amount, which will be an RFP, will be going out for that. The police had the body cameras, uh, the update of the radio system, which was funded through the Town of Groton Capital, which was completed in twenty-one. And they're currently doing the locker, locker replacements in both the women and men's locker room.
That's happening now?
Yep. Yep. They're actually in temporary, in a temporary spot, and that's being worked on, so. And then the, the final slide is the fire. They did Broad Street first-floor renovations. Uh, they had some, a fire truck, um, that needed some engine repair. They did a sprinkler system upgrade at the Eastern Point Station. A fire truck had frame, frame repair. There was another engine repair. They replaced the deputy fire chief's vehicle. And then there's the paving at the Broad Street, which will go along with the paving at the park house with the RFP. So it's kind of a, a very high-level just list to go through with the SIP and the current projects that were completed and a couple of things that are ongoing. So I hope that addressed and was informational.
So we have been actively working on capital projects, uh, while we can with the money. Right, because we've had money from, uh, the permit fees. And that's allowed us to, to do that. So, questions or comments? Okay? Counselor Sheffield?
So right now, we don't have anything, you know, a concrete, you know, the dollar signs for any of the programs we're getting. I guess it's just more of an overview informational thing we have, or is this, you know?
Yeah, just more of, it was more of an informational to see, to see where we stood when, when that plan was developed in two thousand eighteen. It was like, it was, now is a good time, okay. Did, have we not done any of the things that were in the plan? Or have we accomplished all the plans? Or have, kind of just, kind of a roadmap, just to show you where we work as a comparison to that plan.
Thank you.
Counselor Larson?
Thank you, absolutely perfect. Gave me an idea of what was planned, what taken place, what interruptions, what. This is absolutely, uh, thank you. But it brings up the next thing, is like, this is so good. Is this something that should be on the website somewhere? Uh, uh, answer another time, or not at all. But thi, thi, this hits the spot. I truly appreciate it, because looking at it first time, I didn't know what was what coming up. So thi, this really satisfies, um, and more, what, what I was looking for. Couple of questions for classification, learning period. So bonded on some projects have to go through the town? Is that generally it, or is it a trigger point?
And I'm thinking you're referring back to?
Shorewall.
The Shorewall.
Yep.
That, because that's Roads and Streets, which is funded by the town?
Got it.
It goes through.
Got it.
So if you, if you look at the special, there's a special act that created a borough, and then there's a special act that created a city, nineteen sixty-four. There's a section there that talks about the town is responsible for those monies that are necessary and proper for the repair and making of roads in the city of Groton, which are town roads. That one sentence has gotten us into all kinds of debate every year we go for our budget. So what we do is we put everything in our budget and go to them, because early on, people, we were putting things in CIPs and the RTM was cutting them out.
Right.
So, uh, under, uh, Mayor Galbraith's term, she said, nope, we're gonna put everything in here, because this is what it was. We've also had some things cut, uh, and we went to arbitration and we prevailed. So, uh, that's why, for example, when the road washed out down RDB, I, I had to go to, uh, the town council and then the RTM in order to get some funding for that. And we used, uh, funding that, that we had left over from previous year's money plus, uh, EB money. EB said they would, because some of the work that we was doing, we were doing was gonna be on their security fence, so they paid for that. And then the rest was picked up by the town.
And then the last couple of things are, my brain is not as, doesn't retain as much as it used to, is that the Tyler House, in here it says, with the Real Estate Committee, um, looking for recommend, recommendations on?
You're talking about Mother Bailey House?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Mother Bailey House.
Okay, so.
I don't know why I wrote Tyler House.
Let me give you a real quick, I'll, I'll be quick. I know, you get the gauge. You can tell me tomorrow how quick I will. So we just completed the RFP process. It took us about three years. We had, is that right, two years? Two years for sure. So we had the RFP process, we put out an RFP, we got, uh, responses and none of the mental requirements. So we put out another RFP, we had three respondents. And we just finished the third respondent, and we were not able to get to an agreement. So it is back to the Real Estate Committee to decide what we're gonna do.
Got it.
And basically, what we're doing right now is we are getting, uh, an appraisal of the property. With, there's, we're actually, we're getting two appraisals. One is with the restriction, the only restriction would be that there is, that you can't tear the house down. And then the second one is, the restriction is, one, you can't tear the house down, and then two, you gotta maintain the appearance, the historic appearance of it. Once we get those appraisals, then we'll have an idea of, of what the value of the house is, and then we'll decide what our next steps are. That, let me just stop there. I don't, I don't want to go any further because, uh, we haven't, the Real Estate Committee hasn't decided, and I don't want to.
And then the, the last thing was, again, because I don't remember, is with the Groton Estates, was there a proposal that came to us about a trail? There was? See, I don't remember, so thank you for bringing that up, okay?
That, that was part of the property sale.
Okay.
That was, what contingency of that?
Got it, alright, thank you, this was spectacular.
Okay, anything, anything else on this? If you have any questions, and once you decide to look at this and any questions come up, please send me an email, and we'll go from there. Okay, that was informing, so we'll move on. Uh, five, uh, let's see, what are we at? Five sixty-one, Groton Utilities Financials, you gonna do that first?
Yeah, did you, did you want to do these, or did you want to wait till the, the next meeting based on time? I don't know.
It's eight fifteen. What, what's the wishes of the council? Do you want to go through the financials, or do you want to wait and discuss them during the next month? Do you want to go through the financials or do you want to wait and discuss them during the next month?
Why, why's it up to me?
Because you like it.
What is?
I mean, I, I can do it at the mayor council meeting, too.
We could also do it at the mayor council meeting on the first.
Again, I, I'm fine with the room tonight, but I just, I knew, I thought there was a cutoff that we're shooting for.
I'm good deferring to another evening.
Okay? Okay, so I'm seeing heads. So we're going to move the, uh, the Groton Utilities Financials and the city budget presentations to a future meeting, either to a Cal, uh, committee of the whole, or to a mayor and council meeting under communication reports. Okay? The council seems to be okay with that?
Yep.
That's it? All right, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.